Five fifteen, I shall call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Carolina, I will ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Gollington?
Yes.
Saltby?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Morell?
Yes.
Mayewell?
Yes. Greetings, everyone. Welcome to this city council meeting on this fine June tenth. Once again, we will start with Mayor Waller's quote for the day. How many people remember Mae West? I'm going to date you a little bit. Anybody know a few? Kind of a modern, well, kind of a Western version, I guess, of Marilyn Monroe. That's about the best way I can describe her. But this quote comes from her. "You only live once, but if you do it right, once is enough." I like that. "Once is enough." Think that might be a mantra. Put that on my tombstone or grave, whatever it is. Okay, we shall move on. Tonight's agenda. I'll entertain a motion from council to approve. And if there's any additions or corrections, now would be a good time for that.
I make a motion for approval of the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda as is. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, citizens' comments. First, we got Joel. Well, I guess so far that's the only one. Joel Quam is going to give us a presentation from our Bremer Insurance. I'm sure he's got all kinds of good news for us.
I joke. Not many people are happy to see their insurance agent these days.
Well, unless the premiums go down, you know.
But with the exception of city policies, I have quite a few board presentations around this time of year, just how it works with, in the public municipal space. And it's very low positive information. With the sidebar that cities are different, and it is actually positive in all relative comparison to the broader industry. So I'll go over those factors, what this year, last year, some of the high-level changes, things to note, coverage-wise, and the other highlights. And then I also like, just to give you a little context on, you know, the city insurance and insurance coverage for the scope of cities is one factor, but you also deal with other insurances. So I like to give some context as well, because most people, especially on their personal lines or their homeowners, they open it up and they say, "Man, what is going on?" And so this is a little bit helpful, I'll leave behind for you guys to, just to see the, what is going on. And this is, I'll just highlight this, and nothing to read through or go through. But the headwinds that we've seen in previous years, namely in the property liability side, when you're dealing with most of your insurances, this is a snapshot of why that is. So when you look on the first page, this highlights 2024 property. And that's certainly a year that's in, that underwriters look at most recently, but it's, what this highlights is 2027, or 2024, had 27 separate billion-dollar extreme events. It's the second worst year on record, with all of the worst years on record being in the past decade. So right there, when you see property and insurance pace for stuff, and stuff goes up and has gone up in cost. So you see a combination of just increases in storm activity. And yes, it's the hurricanes, it's the fires. But what's changed in our Midwest pocket is the severe convective storms, they call it. It's the wind hail zones. And now we are all in high wind hail zones that underwriters underwrite too. So it drives the carriers that are still offering coverage. They either pull a couple levers and rates are deductible, and you'll see in that a lot, apart from the league. Now, the league is its own bucket. It was created for and on behalf of Minnesota cities. So it's a little bit insulated in what they see, and it's a little bit more, and a lot more stable in comparison to look at that. So comparison-wise, on most of my other renewals in the public municipal state space, we're fighting to keep below 20% from a premium difference year over year. You guys will see a premium reduction, but not only a reduction in premium, also rate-wise. Across the board, with the exception of auto, which was flat, your property, your liability had a net rate decrease of eight percent. And when you look at that, the league, it's a culmination of their underwriting and actuarial, and it plays on three years of the most recent, and they had less claims than they anticipated. So what that means, apart from the dividends that you also receive through the program, is a rate decrease. Now, they'll adjust your limits to keep pace with inflation, rising costs, and that is building the contents and various degrees like that. So net, you'll see some lift there from increases, but it's a net rate decrease. Work comp, you'll see a little bit of increase there, and that's disguised a little bit, and that's purely your experience amount factor. You have one lower claims year drop-off and a higher claims year come on. So it increased your experience mod, but the rate decrease in work comp, average across the board, is a 20% rate decrease. And that's just not very common, in fact, extremely rare in today's insurance market. So all in all, when looking at, and I'm going to highlight a couple other things, but it's a 3% decrease year over year, and the only change in premium that wasn't a decrease was on your work comp and on the auto side, which was part auto list and then part of claims experience there. A couple things to note out as far as coverage changes. So the league follows really what the state is doing for things like cannabis sales, and you look at liquor sales, with the highlight that it is technically excluded with the exception that they added back for low potency edibles. So at liquor stores, that is what is allowed for sales. I know that question has come up. So the high potency and anything along those lines would not be part of their package, but the low potency edible is included. And if there's specific questions on there, as far as any, you know, housekeeping, we can certainly ask and get underwriting's direction. And then I will add to highlight, kind of my closing on the last page, that coverage through the, the league covers for U.S. council members as leaders and decision-makers on behalf of the city. And liability has drastically changed post-COVID. And they coined the term "social inflation" in that, once it gets to a courtroom, the verdicts and the cases have astronomically increased in both the claims that were much smaller before to the nuclear verdicts now. The 10 million-plus verdict cases post-COVID increased by 27%, and $100 million verdict cases increased by 35% post-COVID. And part of that is, in the state of Minnesota and most states, there's something that's illegal. It's called third-party litigation financing, where you have an outside stake and investor hedge funds that literally funnel in money, and they have no stake in the case. They just, they're giving money to see it to trial, to extend it as far as they can, kind of the empty pop, the open pocketbook, because they can realize their return. So what that does is more lawyers, more advertising, more everything you see on the news media fuels cases, fuels costs. Now, cities, you are subject to tort statute for the vast majority of things, so you're insulated there. But just know, that's a lot of the headwinds and pressures that we all face, and frankly, our continued two-happy world. So the, all of the diligence, all the things that you guys are doing, this is very important. It's good work, so continue to do that. But we are seeing that quite a bit. In fact, this is the most liability cases that I've seen over a decade being here. So it's, insurance is that kind of always the scary factor, the comeback. But you guys are doing a lot of good stuff, but it's just awareness of what is out there, what we're seeing. So all in all, you guys, compared again to what most are seeing, it's a rate decrease and a premium decrease, which is great. It's not always the case. But I'm happy to answer any questions, and I sincerely appreciate you all having the time. Let me start, you guys, go ahead.
Just on the scheduled mobile property, it went from zero expiring limit to 391,000. Can you explain to us what that is, please?
Yep, so the league changed maybe three, four years ago. So anything under 250,000, it's not scheduled, it's just included in your blanket. Anything over that, you schedule it specifically on. I think you got a 24 John Deere, something like that, was the specific limit on, was it 350? So you just added a mobile piece of property?
Okay. Thank you.
Well, that's definitely good news.
Yes.
I haven't ever heard, I have not heard that in the commercial or private sector, that's for sure.
I was going to say, as it's coming tonight, I, you know, I always prepare a lot, but you feel very real relief trying to come into, you know, it's, you can see the factors. I mean, it's the cracks between both sides, insurance companies saying, you know, a lot of them, when you look at the last five years, they're struggling to remain profitable from an underwriting standpoint. They try to make it up with investments. But then we have the rest of us, consumers, it's like, well, it's already way too expensive. And where's the in-between? So when you see a premium decrease, it's very positive.
Very good. Any questions for Joel? Thanks, Joel. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right. We shall move on. We have no public hearings tonight. We shall move on to our regular, approval of our regular reading, meeting minutes from May 27, 2025.
I will move approval of the 5:27, 25 regular meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve our May 27, 2025 regular meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have the condensed version of those same minutes from May 27, 2025.
I will move approval of the condensed minutes.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the May 27, 2025 condensed version of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next before us is our consent agenda, which tonight consists of the audit of city bills, our gambling reports, planning commission board meeting minutes from March 4, 2025, Morris transit report, and our application for exempt permit for assumption church. I guess I will move approval of the items on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. I will bring it back to the council, city council for any discussion on any of those items.
I see that we're having a significant increase in the transit usage, which is great. I think that's a wonderful service for everybody in town. And everybody that works here does a great job. Just like to bring that out.
Have you heard any, I was reading through the planning commission updates from March. That was in a, of course, we approved that zero foot setback. Is there any updates back on where we're at with that, or have they indicated? Tell that's moving along, or no?
I have not heard.
Yeah, okay.
So I know she asked a question today about, from the building inspector, a question from him. So I think they're still in the process of getting that all taken care of.
Okay. Yeah, it'll be exciting to see how, when that gets moving along, I guess. Any other discussion from any members of the council? Hearing none. We have a first and a second on that to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next before us, under petitions, requests, and communications, we have a tourism board marketing recommendation. And I guess, Becca, if you would like to speak to that, I turn it over to you, I guess.
Yeah. So the tourism board met last week, so they had four different things that had, they had requests from. So storm hockey, golf outing, they had asked for some advertising dollars, which the tourism board is looking to do a tier-two. And then a Yodle calendar. So when Carolina and I went to the Explore Minnesota Conference, we talked to some people with this Yodle calendar. Something nice about it is it automatically pulls from different social media, other websites, for events going on in Morris, and will put them in the calendar if they change dates. For some reason, it'll automatically update. Nobody has to go in and automatically do that. It looks cleaner, it's very nice and searchable, very user-friendly, and very eye-appealing. So we are looking to add that to our calendar on the tourism website, and then network with click content to try and get it on our main city website, too. So that is $920 to set up, and then a yearly fee of $1,794. So that was, that was approved by them to move forward to council also. Still working on doing like a monthly calendar with Stevens County newspaper. She had some more things she wanted to get together before bringing it to the board, so that'll come to the meeting next month. And then Prairie River Digital, they were talked to about possibly doing some digital work for the board, which click content does some of that, too. So we're going to just wait until the strategic plan is done on that to see kind of what our next steps are with more digital advertising. So the two that we are requesting dollars for is that storm hockey, golf outing advertisement at tier-two, and then the Yodle calendar.
Did the tourism board get to see the Yodle calendar, or how that works?
They did, yeah.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I should have sent you a link to it to see.
Oh, it would have been.
Yeah. Yeah, well, everybody.
Oh, yeah.
Just the council, so they could see how it kind of looked.
So like if there's a, okay, say the baseball association has a webpage, and they post an event, that'll automatically pull into this calendar, so people?
Cool.
Well, it's the digital world we're in. I think it's, might as well take advantage of it. I like the automatic part of it, now you don't have to have anybody babysitting it.
Yeah.
I will move approval for this, passing a motion to approve the two spending items as listed here for us.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and a second to approve the tourism, tourism board marketing recommendation. I'll just ask for a voice vote on that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. We have ordinances and resolutions. We have a few tonight. We will start out, the first ordinance before us is an ordinance for the preservation of Eastside Park. And I guess, Becca, if you want to speak a little bit to that, you sure can.
Yeah, so we had a work session last Monday to discuss different options. And then it sounded like this, this proposed ordinance, where there is two listening sessions prior to any decisions about park improvements being made, would be done. This went to the five members, and they all agreed to move forward with this ordinance.
Any discussion from members of the council?
I am still, the subdivision two exemption by the majority of the city council. That changes how we operate as a council when we're voting on something. It's usually a majority of the quorum, of a quorum that's here. So this means we couldn't, wouldn't be, does this mean we wouldn't be able to vote on anything unless all five members were here?
I believe it would be construed as a majority of, essentially a majority of whoever's voting. So typically, you know, so, you know, obviously, you always need a quorum to do anything. But I think it's just a majority of that quorum. I mean, it's, yeah, to me, it just means action of the city council, I guess, if that's helpful. Because remember, you're already majority vote by statute, so.
I read through it, tried to understand it better, but if there's five of us, a majority is still going to be three of us. So we don't need five. We need to have three of the five vote to make it work.
And it's a majority of that.
So that would be a majority if we have three of the five of us, so.
I think, you know, it's been a work in progress, as we all know. I think it speaks to, the reason why this is before us, is we're doing this not only, lessons learned, I guess you could say, but for future, whenever we have a project of this size and magnitude come before the council, it puts a process in place. You know, we, we had none before. So I think to that end, this ordinance will help future people sitting in those seats make decisions and encourage collaboration and kind of all that stuff. So I guess I don't, I think it's a good thing. I think it speaks to kind of a lot of different things. It's simple and pretty straightforward, I think, but.
I, in general, this, of the ones we've seen, I like this one the best. The piece where I take issue is kind of what I talked about, I believe, at our last meeting and maybe at our work session, is that, and I, and I understand, and I, I would encourage, if someone was to do or propose a project, follow these steps in general. But the issue that I have with an ordinance specific to one parcel of property in town is that it's only for one parcel of property in town. And we're setting, we're opening up the door for precedence on different parcels, which isn't necessarily a bad thing, but we're extending some timelines, which, again, isn't a bad thing. I'm totally fine with, with delays in projects. I have no problems with that. That's, that is one of my biggest issues, is the potential for setting precedent. And that's, that's what ordinances are for, though, right? And secondarily, I encourage creativity, and I encourage thinking outside the box. But what I fear is the potential for, if we put a specific ordinance on Eastside Park, what that says to the park board about having to do major changes. And that's what I fear, that if we put something in place there, that no improvements, no updates will be done. And I would encourage, if this passes, that the park board don't view it as that. But in my opinion, I, I don't want to handcuff a volunteer board that, that they might feel that they have to go excess steps. Now, I would recommend, again, I would recommend following, even if this doesn't pass, following all of these, these steps.
You know, and I, I like your statement, Zach, regarding the park board. And we did talk about that briefly in our work session, about, you know, where is the park board in all of this? And, you know, our boards and commissions are very, very important. Not only the park board, but all of our boards and commissions are very important as to how our city functions. And we value all of those volunteers and all of the various boards. And the last thing that I think we want to do as a council is undermine the authority of our park board. That being said, you know, over the years, as I've been sitting in these seats, the park board has made a lot of recommendations, and we have pretty much adhered to and followed most of the park, I think, all of the park board recommendations, so. But this situation, which brings us to this ordinance, was completely different, unprecedented, and really, it's city history. I don't think we've ever had a project of this magnitude presented before this council. That's a little different than adding a park bench or a piece of equipment here and there, you know, adding a dog park fence and those kinds of things. So I think what this is saying, this ordinance speaks to, is when we have a large project, that's when we, I think, need to maybe pause and solicit some feedback from the public. And I think that's, to me, this is all this is saying. I don't think it really undermines the authority of the park board, because they're still going to be involved in this. The park board, we all respect, I always respect what their position is. So the way I'm looking at it, I don't see it as a threat to our board. Maybe others have a different perspective and thought, but that's kind of my thoughts.
I think there was some give and take on both sides to get to this point. You know? I don't think that either side was wrong in any way to what they wanted. I think that people on this council want to preserve how the city operates, not, it really isn't subject to what's going to happen at the park. It's more about how we operate and how we conduct our business, more than Eastside Park itself and saving it, which I think is, was great to do. I think that's the concern that a lot of us have, is going forward, just how we do that. But at certain points, we also have to meet in the middle as a council with the public, and we put our idea out there, and we have a compromise. So I feel going forward, this is something that we should, we should move forward with. We've kind of met in the middle. I don't think it, it doesn't not allow the council to make decisions. It does put a framework on how to discuss it, which I think is probably a concern for people. You know, to be a little more involved and stuff like that, so. That's where I come from on that side of it, so.
I'd agree. We need to do a better job of notifying the public on things that are going to happen, which we discussed at our meeting on, with, after suggestions from the committee, to notify, to try to, to put it more out in the public. I mean, we can always improve, and things constantly change. What worked as a contact for, and we discussed that with some of the different media, things are changing rapidly with all the different resources, tools that we have. But, you know, we just have to work at doing a better job of communicating with the public on things we're doing. Everything we do is public information, and we have to remember that.
Yeah, I just think it really lays out a path, a path to follow. You know, had something like this been in place when this whole project started, you know, things would have probably, you know, gone differently. Who knows? But going forward, I think now we have a path and a direction, and again, not only with this park, but really any of the other projects that we deal with. Now we have a path.
I agree with you, Mayor. I will make a motion to approve the ordinance for the preservation of Eastside Park.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve that. Thank you very much. I think what we'll do, Caroline, is we'll have roll call vote on that ordinance, please.
Councilmember Gollington?
No.
Saltby?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Gollington?
No.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. Okay, we shall move on. Next resolution before us, that actually passed, N three two, right?
Correct.
Next before us is a resolution accepting insurance renewal proposal. Before we get to that, I just want to say thank you for those present. I think we can feel good about what we just, what we did and hopefully, you feel the same way. All right, resolution accepting insurance renewal proposal that we just heard of, I guess, or heard from.
I will move a resolution accepting the insurance renewal proposal that we just had submitted to us by Bremmer Insurance.
It's encouraging seeing where we are and, you know, from where I started to where we are now, right? Seeing the same amount of coverage with the drop in rate, so with that, I will second that motion.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution accepting the insurance renewal proposal. Once again, Carolina, I'll ask for a roll call vote on that, please.
Councilmember Salvi?
Yes.
Correll?
Yes.
Galton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes. All right, the next resolution is a resolution authorizing task order number one. Becca, I'll ask you to maybe speak to that one for us.
We have Ryan here for more engineering stuff, yeah.
There we go, there, well, let, Ryan, Ryan.
Ryan.
Yeah, there we go, thank you.
I mean, council, so there's two resolutions in front of you tonight in regards to more engineering. There's the task order and then there's the master service agreement. Not going to read the whole master service agreement, I think it's fifty-three pages. All the master service agreement is, is a framework of the definitions, the normal things we have in different parts of an engineering agreement. So it has all the liability of insurance and coverages, dispute resolution, everything that you see in a normal contract. So that's kind of, we'll reference back when we do different task orders and you're going to see more task orders because we're starting to get started with some of the exciting projects you have coming with the different trail projects and we're already talking with staff about next year's street projects. So you'll see a separate task order for each of those projects. So you can have at least, some of it's going to be lump sum, some of it's going to be hourly. It depends on what type of project we're assisting with. And we'll work with Becca and Ryan and Russ on kind of getting it together and then we'll bring it to council for your consideration. So the first item in front of you is task order one. This is the general engineering agreement. It's for, part of our proposal to the city was the first couple hours of every month, we're billing at a reduced rate underneath this. It's giving you a break on, if your staff need a call and have us do a quick calculation on something, it's at a lower rate than normal, just kind of the little things so they're not hesitating to call, hey, can you do a calculation on the stormwater? Or can you contact the state and see what's really going on with some project? So this is kind of the catch-all one. We are not in the practice of billing for every fifteen minutes or phone call or email. We don't like operating that way. I don't operate with my cities, any of that, you know. If it's something that we're going to bill you for, it's something we're actually working on. You know, that staff time is on, not a quick call, hey, Ryan, can you look this up? Or Ryan, do you know that? So just so you kind of know our philosophy on billing because there's going to be, if we have good communication and we can talk back and forth, like me to Russ and Ryan and Becca, then we're sitting on top of things. Then we're moving, then on the bigger projects, yeah, you're going to see some pretty big engineering bills, but that's also when we're using the state aid funds or different funding sources to do those half million, million dollar projects. So that's kind of the really fast, quick overview. I'm not trying to shorten it that much and I'm happy to take any particular questions you have, but that's the summary of how we do, almost every city we work with has a master service agreement just for those general conditions. Then when we do those task orders, we don't have to throw them in every time we do a task order, so.
Do you want to speak a little bit about date and duration of what we're signing up for, timelines? Obviously, I said in the interview, but for the rest of council.
So the MSA, I think in this one, is actually, it's listed as a three-year duration. That does not mean that you're locked into more engineering for three years. There is an out in there. You send us a letter, it's like sixty days and you can say you're done with more engineering. We feel like that, that's, you know, we're not trying to handcuff any municipality into, you're locked in with us, you can't do anything for a set period of time. The reason why we have a duration in there is usually, it's just a good reminder, we should probably look at the liability insurance and see if any thresholds have changed. So that's really why we have a duration in there, just kind of a reminder of, hey, let's stop, let's take a look at it. Is there something that needs to be updated because of maybe a state statute or League of Minnesota City said you should change something or include something? So that's why you have those states in there.
Joe, have you had a chance to look this over?
Yes, yes, I did not have any concerns.
Thank you.
That seems pretty clean to me, like I said, I don't see any problem with it at all. I'll make a motion to approve the authorizing task order one resolution.
I will second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We'll have roll call vote on that resolution, please.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Galton?
Yes.
Correll?
Yes.
Follow me?
Yes.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes. The next resolution is authorizing the master service agreement with more engineering. Kind of goes hand and, hand in hand with what we just talked about, right?
Correct. Yep. I will make a motion authorizing, on the resolution authorizing the master service agreement with more engineering.
I'll second.
All right, thank you, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution authorizing a master service agreement with more engineering. And once again, I'll ask for a roll call vote on that, please.
Councilmember Galton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Correll?
Yes.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes. All right, thank you.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, Ryan, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, our last ordinance before us tonight is a resolution finding facts, finding a nuisance and ordering abatement of a nuisance at five oh six West Eleventh. And I will ask our city manager to speak to that.
Yeah, so May thirteenth, we had a hearing in front of council for five oh six West Eleven. He did not show. You would see the affidavit that I prepared, so April eighth, pictures were taken. You would receive those also from Russ, took the pictures on April eighth. We prepared a letter and sent out a certified letter April eleventh. The property owner, his address is Chicago in the tax statement, so that is where the letter was sent. After sending those out and talking with council, we needed to have a sort of, a letter served to them or we could put it in the paper if they were not a property owner in the city of Morris limit. So since he was not a property, like his address on the tax statement is Chicago, we were able to put the letter in the paper. So what you see in front of you, that that letter went in the paper and then he did not come to the hearing. So things that need to be addressed at his property is the scrap metal, wood piles, wood pallets, the metal, the plastic, other things documented in the pictures that are taken, that were taken by Russ and to clean it up or store it properly. So that, those are the finding of facts and then asking you to figure out how many days that you want to give him to clean up the area. That's on number twelve there, you'll have to figure out how long you want to give.
Any suggestion from you?
You know, it's really a council decision. I mean, you want to give somebody some time and you probably don't want it to be unreasonably short. But, you know, I understand you want to get this done too, so, I mean, I think, so, I guess I put the question to you. Are you thinking weeks, a month?
I'd say thirty days. We've been dealing with it, it's been drug out, it's been going on. I think thirty days, thirty days gives the individual time to get it cleaned up. It's a month or four weeks and I think that's ample time and to move. That would be my recommendation.
I think legally, we don't see a problem with thirty days, so.
It just doesn't appear that he's been real cooperative, so that's disappointing, but I agree with Jeff. I think thirty days is fair.
Let's move it along and that's, that's plenty of time to clean that up. We're not taking a house down or moving a garage or anything, we're just cleaning up an area.
I can make that a motion to do a thirty days on it to get it cleaned up?
I'll second that. All right, we have a motion and a second.
Do you have further discussion?
Yeah, any further discussion before we move on, thirty days, okay? Everybody's okay with that, all right, we'll ask for a roll call vote on that resolution, please.
Councilmember Ralph?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Galton?
Yes.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes. Okay, city manager's newsletter.
Yeah, so we've had those junk hearings, so Doug and I spoke. He has a list of things that he's looking to clean up and is hoping to have that done by mid-August. Him and I will meet again over at his place in the middle of July to kind of see where progress is and make sure we're kind of staying on track with that list. We had quite a few other letters that went out, trying to be proactive on getting out, getting some of the junk areas cleaned up. So our strategy is to send out a letter first that just tells them they have an issue and so many days to clean it up. After that, we'll go through the administrative process that we kind of went through with the last four and kind of go from there. Grass at five oh six West Eleventh Street, so just wanting to put that out there. I know the neighbors are concerned and we've had discussions with this property just in the last resolution. But we did send out a letter to five oh six West Eleventh and tried to have them mow after that time expired. He did kick us off his property. So we worked with the attorney's office to send out another letter because we didn't have a due process in there on having them request a hearing for the grass. So we did send another letter out Friday. In that letter, we do then give seventy-two hours to request a hearing if they, they feel that we are not correct. We are working with the attorney's office to get him charged with some misdemeanors for not having the grass mowed. So for those who live over by five oh six West Eleventh, we are trying to mitigate that problem. Last week, when we measured, it was over twenty-four inches, so.
And this is?
Twenty-four inches tall?
Yeah.
And this is the same property that we're dealing with?
That is the same property that we have the junk, yep.
Just to clarify to everybody that it is the same property that hasn't been mowed that we're dealing with, the debris in the yard that we're dealing with.
Yep.
Maybe he's trying to hide the debris with grass.
Well, we're trying to work with them, I mean, come and talk. I mean, at our hearing we had, we had an individual come and we set down some timelines and Becca has met with them and we're, we're working with them. We want to get it cleaned up, it's not that we want to be the bad guy, the, ah, you have to, it's like, make it look decent so your neighbors have a respectable neighborhood is what we're after and just try to work with us.
Right.
I think we would all hope that everybody would have respect for your neighbors and take care of your property and stuff. And so when you don't, that's when we have to step in and make sure that there is respect because it isn't just their property, it's the properties around them, it's the whole city, it's, and I guess they don't have any respect for the city or their neighbors, so I guess we'll have to step in.
Time sheets, we're working on creating new time sheets. So our current time sheets, they just kind of go by days, we put in hours. I don't know if it was a work session or my review, we talked about, kind of like more of a pension system. Since we don't have that, we're looking at just different time sheets. Kind of still playing around with them, we had, we had talked about doing like a thirty-minute increment and doing that. Maggie and I met with the first kind of draft of it and we're kind of thinking we want maybe something different, so. But new time sheets for employees will be coming out. Legislative update, so we're still not quite done with the legislative session. Budget still needs to be finalized. I know you kind of put some of this into my last manager report, but I thought I'd maybe kind of go through some of it again. So so far, there's no bonding bill. It's a hope with this special session that they do it, but the league didn't sound very positive on possibly getting a bonding bill again this year.
Did they make any decisions in LGA, I was looking?
They are not increasing it, so there's no reduction or reducing it, there's no reduction in LGA.
Okay, so they did, at least got that part resolved.
Yeah, yeah. DNR annual permit fees have gone up, they haven't changed since two thousand eight. So I did find out who the different groups are looking to change the zoning. So it's a lot of environmental groups, along with the Center for the American Experience that have been pushing the land use and zoning changes that we talk about and talk to our legislators about that we don't want to go into place. So things they would put mandates on are the lot sizes, parking requirements and setbacks. It didn't pass this year, but they said it got a lot more traction than it did last year. So something that'll probably be a continued concern moving forward. They did say that it's not just our state, it's a lot of different states. They did state that certain programs are giving points to jurisdictions that have more inclusive housing requirements in their codes, such as not requiring, I think, we require a parking, one point five and a half stalls for parking on apartments. If you lower that, then you get extra points for different programs. So that's kind of, they're incentivizing to get cities to comply with, with what they want with some of those restrictions without putting them in place. There is no reduction in LGA, which is a good thing for us. They did change some things around with the cannabis gross receipts tax. So they increased it from ten percent to fifteen percent, but with that, they decided to eliminate the local cannabis aid to cities. So not like we saw that money, but that would have been money coming in that, that we won't.
So they're going to collect more and give less?
Yes.
Okay.
Open meeting laws were changed, so as discussed in my last newsletter, the changes were made to the remote meetings. It's going to be a lot easier for someone who's not available to call in or be there via Zoom and tape away and have a vote at the meeting. So it eliminates, so before, you had to state where you are, have it put on the agenda, exactly where you were going to be and it had to be a public place. So they eliminated that. They also eliminated a three-meeting remote participation limit. So, and then it, and then the other open meeting law changes that if a local paper were to close, cities could post their notices on their website. Doesn't affect us as we have a local newspaper. Paid family medical leave law was changed, so that goes into effect next January. So the cap went from, have that wrong, one point two to one point one is what the cap went to. Next year, when it goes into effect, they are starting it at point eight eight percent. In our last contract negotiations, we have it where the city will pay half and the employee will pay half. So that's how it works for us. And then the whistleblower modification, they talked a lot about fraud this year. And then the whistleblower modification, they talked a lot about fraud this year in the state just because they had a lot of fraud with the state, so they did add modification to the whistleblower law to add fraud, misuse and waste for personal gain to the whistleblower laws. So, that protects employees who in good faith report the, the fraud or waste or abuse. June twenty-fourth, we'll have our hearing starting at three o'clock. And then I'd like to request that we have our posted meetings start at seven fifteen. So, two, two different types of meetings, if we could have a vote or a consensus on both of those, so that's seven fifteen. And then we are looking and had a request for a TIF district, so looking to schedule a work session on the eighteenth, anytime after four. So, if we wanted to make it for five fifteen, so everyone's off at work. We don't know how long that, that will be, but.
I can make four work, I guess.
Well, we've got tree board that evening.
I'm gone all this week. I can do it remotely?
Yeah.
I don't know if I could service mail there.
Tree board meetings start?
Uh, four thirty is when that starts.
Four thirty, tree board.
We could start at five thirty for the TIF.
I can make that work.
At whatever time, yeah.
Five thirty next Wednesday, the eighteen?
That works for me, I guess.
Here?
So, I think under your organizational rules, you should probably want an actual motion to change the regular meeting to seven?
Seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen.
We'll start with that first and then we can just have you on a second motion to set the work session date then, too?
I don't believe you need a?
Don't need a motion for that, just?
I don't know that you need one.
Okay, so let's deal with that, we'll entertain a motion then.
I move to set our June twenty-fourth council meeting to start at seven fifteen P.M. on that meeting.
I will second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to set our June twenty-fourth meeting starting at three and then, of course, that's the hearing start time and then the regular meeting at seven fifteen. We have a motion and a second, I'll just ask for a voice vote on that, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
So, the hearing is at three then?
Yes.
Any questions from the city manager's newsletter?
I have one more thing.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I did have a question, the paid family, I don't believe, I believe that is, when that's paid out, that's paid out through the state, they have to apply to the state for that, correct?
Yep.
Was there any, was there any information on that for you as a city, do you self-regulate that? Is there any regulations that you have? You don't get to deny it or that's up to the state?
That's up to the state.
Right. Is there any whistleblower stuff for that?
If there's fraud, I, I?
Was there talked about any avenues about that if employees?
I would assume that that's probably under the, the fraud, misuse and waste for personal gain.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
That's going to be one to watch.
That will be one to watch. The only other thing I have is we had the fly-in on Saturday, it was very well attended. We think there was probably approximately five hundred people that showed up. They served four hundred, they had four hundred plates, I think, for the pancake feed and four hundred malts that were given out and fifty planes that came in. So, a lot, a lot bigger than what we were expecting for our first ones, we're super excited. The group that kind of helped put this all together, they are going to do a debrief, hopefully next week, this, end of this week, beginning next week, and then have an airport board meeting to have some discussion on kind of how it went and next, next year, so very excited.
Shout-out to the firemen that put on the breakfast. They had a pancake and sausage breakfast, so I want to congratulate or thank them for putting that on, it was well received. I shared with the council, a couple of members of the council, I got to see the plane, the lifelink plane, what happened to be there and six years ago, I got to see that plane up close and personal when I was in Canada. It was the same plane that picked me up, so. Had a little kind of goosebumps when I walked up to that plane, I remember very clearly. That plane literally saved my life, had it not been for that plane, I don't know, I probably wouldn't be sitting here. But, so that was kind of cool for me, I guess personally.
Also, just for what it's worth, the first weekend in June, I think every year is Cyrus Days for us not to be stepping on toes out back and forth and if, if we can work out so that we're not the same morning that both places have a pancake breakfast, it would just be probably better for both parties if we can have a date that doesn't, you know, jump in with that. If we can make it work so that we're not jumping on another weekend that's already occupied.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions for our city manager on our newsletter? Hearing none, we'll move on to board updates. If anybody has any boards, mine are yet to meet this week, so I don't really have anything in my end.
We had a later planning commission meeting than usual last month. They heard on a variance for the HRA, which did end up passing. There was some serious consternation about that because the two properties that are adjacent to it, they did not hear any, any variance before them previously, but they are very close and infringing on the property lines. So, one of the things that after, after that was voted on, that the planning commission recommended to us or, you know, you'll probably see it whenever those meeting minutes come through is that they asked if we re-look at some of our zoning ordinances. Obviously, those were older, older properties, previous building man, inspectors, building plans, but what the, what the process is for that, whether we want to keep those ordinances in place. I know we talked about codification, but that, they were rightfully so, a little, a little upset about that. And that, that boils down to the enforcement side of it.
Where was that property at?
Uh, the old school property.
So, what'd be the neighbors then, of course?
The East Point and Legacy?
Yes.
Which were infringing on what the ordinance said for setback.
Correct, yes.
So, what the planning commission is wondering is if we can change the ordinance to the setback or look at that setback.
Look at that setback, yes.
Yeah.
And the, and the neighbors, obviously, and the, part of the reason why the HRA was there was because they're working with the building inspector that said, hey, if you do this size, you need a variance, which is why they were there. So, they, I think we're seeing that with our building inspector, but that's, the planning commission has a very valid concern.
Good to know, thanks for sharing. Anybody else? Boards, anything? I have none. Hearing none. Other business, we have our park, park tour immediately following this meeting at six?
I just got one quick thing to add and I'm sorry I missed it earlier, but just reading through as we were discussing other, but back on page seven, I believe, of our minutes where it states on the vote on the East Side Park that it was three in favor, one abstaining. The vote was actually two in favor, one abstaining and one against on both the regular minutes and the condensed minutes, it's that last paragraph, I believe on page seven on the regular. Uh, that, that's the condensed. But if it's, it's going out to be accurate in what it actually was. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anything else to come before the council? Hearing none. I shall adjourn the meeting.